With our agenda, I'd like to get one of them here. All right, there we are. We now have a quorum of the council. We began our session at 6:00 and immediately moved into a closed session to discuss legal issues related to the Tacoma Park Police Department. We are now moving on with the remainder of our agenda. And the next item on the agenda is the adoption of minutes. We have in front of us the minutes from four meetings, some of which are Thursday budget meetings, May 11th, May 15th, May 18th, and May 22nd. Does someone want to move adoption of the minutes?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Minutes are adopted.
The next item on the agenda is council comments and announcements. Bruce?
I'd just like to cover a couple of things. It's been a month since I've been here. I know it's been three weeks since the council met. I missed the last meeting, and I just wanted to let people know that that's because I was at the National Association of Regional Councils meeting in San Antonio, which was very informative, very helpful. We heard a number of interesting speakers, had some good sessions, and I will pass along some good information to my colleagues from that. The, I guess, the following week, all of us, most of us went to the Maryland Municipal League Conference in Ocean City, which is the annual meeting there. Again, some good sessions and a lot of good networking with other municipal colleagues and other officials from around the state. I did want to point out some special effort that was made by staff this year. At MML, they had the Main Street Maryland section of the exhibit area where a number of municipalities, I don't know whether like 20 or 30 of them, that had exhibit booths. And Tacoma Park did have one, and I think it was a particularly outstanding booth. City staff, particularly Sarah Danes, put together a real good package of information. And I think the highlight of it for many people was a special CD of Tacoma Park musicians that was distributed to people there. It was a limited run that I hope will just be the first of many. I believe it was a collector's edition of 200 only. And it had music and information on many Tacoma Park musicians. And it was also a CD-ROM so that people could get further information. And it was in the format of kind of pretending that you were going to the ticket booth and getting information. They handed out information on where you could go to hear the musicians at the Folk Festival, Jazz Festival. So I think it was a real opportunity to kind of showcase Tacoma Park and some of the artists who make this home and make it such a special place. And I did want to point out that I thought that was a great effort. One final thing, all of my colleagues should have received an email late this afternoon. I have a hard copy of it here, so you will all have it. And I just wanted to call your attention to it. It's a letter from the Westmoreland Area Community Organization with their recommendations for some things that we might do in reference to the Community Legacy Fund's Old Town Parking Discussion, which is on the agenda for next week. So I would just like for my colleagues to look through this letter and take some of this information to heart as we get ready for next week. They want to make sure that we pay attention to the creation of a comprehensive plan for parking in the Old Town Business Area and think more comprehensively about linking the ICG Tacoma Development and the Ursiolo Development and Parking Area. And they have some particular concerns that will be, I'm sure they'll be here to represent next week, and I just wanted to give my colleagues a heads up.
I actually responded to that email already to the president.
Okay. Good. I know it only came about two or three hours ago.
Any other comments? Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. And I just wanted to thank everyone involved in organizing the Fourth of July Parade and fireworks this year. I thought that it went very well this year. It was a little scary in the afternoon when we had that thunderstorm, but it cleared up and we had, I think, one of the biggest crowds that we've ever had at the fireworks that evening. I appreciate hearing feedback from the community on what people felt worked well and what didn't work well, so that we can make next year's festivities even better than this year's.
Any other comments? I think there, I just wanted to add, I think there were several members of the council, including myself, who went to the MML convention. And these conventions are useful on a couple of fronts. One is that we learn specific information that are relevant to our community. And the other is that we get an opportunity to talk to other elected officials from across the state. And that's always been very helpful to find out how other people do things. It's very often gives me ideas as to things that we can do better, more effectively, or sometimes it makes me happy that we're not doing things the way that some other people do things. But that's always, those meetings are always very useful for that reason also. So just to note that also. Anything else? Okay. We will move on to the next item, which is the public comment period. This is the time set aside on the agenda for comments on items that are not on a special session agenda. There's a number of items on the special session agenda, and we'll allow time when we get to those items for comments. So this would be the appropriate time for other items, including things that are not on our agenda at all. So yes. And if you come up to the microphone, I'd ask that you identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. We have a little light on the podium that'll let you know when your three minutes are up.
That's fine. My name is Bunny Smith. Formerly, possibly you may want it as formal, is Rosalind Smith, 211 Hodges Lane, Tacoma Park. I am a 35-year resident of the city. And generally speaking, I've always had very, very positive comments to make. At this time, I want to urge the council to revise the tree ordinance so that it is not used to enable residents to harass their neighbors, which is exactly the situation we have been put in for about two years. We have a property at 213, which we own and decided to build on and talked about it. My neighbors came to me expressing interest when they found out that it was in fact a buildable lot. It was offered to them three times at below-market rate. Each time, they demurred. I began to understand they perhaps didn't want to buy it, they wanted to have it. When we decided to build on it and construction began, that's when the harassment started. And it was nonstop. They used the tree ordinance to provide a stop-work order that took five months with the additional costs that that involved, things being backordered and all this kind of stuff. It was a nightmare. At the moment, we have no driveway because they're using the tree ordinance again, saying that we cannot build on that, near a certain tree, which is close to their property as well, but on our land. The thing that's so interesting is, they're saying our building, a parking space there, will affect the tree roots. Their two SUVs are parked on the other side, exactly on the other side of that tree. I do not understand this kind of discriminatory situation. I do not understand why the city has enabled us to be harassed like this. And I would very, very, very much urge that this tree ordinance be looked at carefully so it isn't a matter of neighbors going quickly to a city official and that person jumping like this and causing other residents so much trouble. I think I wouldn't have come to you except a couple of things. I was reading something the Rabbi Lerner said, that people just have come to accept a lot of very negative stuff, well, that's the real world. And I didn't think Tacoma Park was that kind of real world. The other thing is, my daughter, who grew up here in all the schools, now says she just doesn't feel very good about her community. This is, we are still without a parking space, the neighbors are still parking their SUVs on the other side, and they are still coming by and harassing and so forth. It isn't fun to, on a Saturday morning, the first interchange you have, somebody coming to the, oh, I made three minutes. Somebody comes to the door and screams at you, "You tree killer." And that is very mild, because I don't have the venom that those people have.
Well, I appreciate that information. Thank you. And I know that the council has talked about doing some revisions to the tree ordinance, so that we will certainly take that, we will keep that in mind.
How can I find out what follows from this?
Are you talking about your specific situation? Are you talking about the tree ordinance itself?
The tree ordinance itself.
It's unlikely, given our schedule, that we will have any time to do anything before the fall.
Okay.
But I know that there are some things that we said we would take another look at.
Okay.
I know that Councilmember Williams has a couple of things that he wants to have us take a look at.
Okay. As far as our own situation, if we want to go forward with it, we have, there's a little scenario, which I think the county is pretty tired of. But what happens is that it's a 15-day notice, and then the people protest, and then it goes to the Tree Commission, and they follow up and say, "Oh, no, naughty, naughty, we shouldn't build anything," or whatever. At least, this is the way it's been presented to us. And then after that, we go ahead and appeal to the county. And the county then says, "What on earth is Tacoma Park doing?" Because we've heard about this.
Well, I wouldn't prejudge the decision of the Tree Commission. I wouldn't, I wouldn't. If it does go to the Tree Commission, I'm sure they'll be fair. So I wouldn't prejudge what they're going to do.
Okay. All right. I would hope so. And I, do you think in the fall that something may be done about the ordinance?
That, I don't think it'll be before the fall, is what I'm saying, because the council takes the month of August for recess, and this month is already, our schedule's already full. So it would, it would be fall. Okay. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Claudine Schwaber, 7004 Sycamore Avenue in Tacoma Park. I'm here to speak very briefly, I hope, about one item that I read about in passing in the Tacoma Park Newsletter. And that was a reference to a possible including of rent control for owners of single units in Tacoma Park, or in my case, our case, owner occupied. And I wanted to make some comments about that, raise these for your discussion. I don't know where that is, or if I misread it. In fact, it was just one sentence. Let me just clarify, we've been in that house and have owned it for over 20 years. And at the moment, and forever, this flat is only for one person. We don't any other property. We're just not property owners, and we own this one house and the one basement apartment. I am concerned, as are some others, we briefly talked to on our block, but I'm only speaking for us, about the possibility that rent control would now cover owner-occupied units, that is, people living in the same building as the one unit that's down.
What are called accessory apartments.
Okay. Accessory. And I'm going to raise three questions before you go ahead and do this, and I'm happy to answer questions or get additional information. What's the green light? First of all, what is the purpose of this change? What would be the reason for doing something like that? I can tell you that from where we sit and where we've been, our main purpose is to be, is to get tenants who stay as long as possible, that we all get along with. We've had tenants, for example, one person stayed nine years. We did not raise the rent regularly, we didn't, you know, add things that didn't need to be done. We were very excited that she stayed and only raised the rent when something dramatic had to be done. We've also had tenants who couldn't pay the monthly rent for a while because they were consultants. We didn't charge a fee, we didn't cost them anything else, we worked something out. So that, you know, that's true. The third example is that we recently had somebody who had to leave under, before the one-year lease was up. That's the requirement, at least a one-year lease. We didn't go after her and say she had to pay the rest, you know, sort of things happened, she didn't have to cover the extra months. So the point I'm making here is first, what is the purpose? If the purpose in part, at least from our perspective, is to get people to go as quickly, to stay as long as possible, that's important. Quickly too, because like, is this the light I'm supposed to be watching?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. The other one is, I'm really concerned about the possibility of incredible bureaucracy. And I sent a message or a statement, so you'll get all the details and some experience I've had with double bureaucracy, county and the city at the same time, asking for the same information but with different deadlines. And finally, I'm going to raise the question that I've learned over the years, because I used to be in criminal justice and now I'm a management professor as well as a mediator. And what I wrote here, so I'll say to you very, relatively quickly, please be careful as you develop something, that the implementation for which you design a remedy is not more costly, more time-consuming, and takes more staff than the reason for which it was intended in the first place. That problem is a hallmark of a lot of programs. You start out with one small reason, and you've got this big staff, and you're spending your time and constant paperwork. Please be very careful before you go ahead with this, if you are.
Okay. The issue is going to be discussed this evening. It's on our work session agenda, and it wouldn't, whatever we do in terms of what gets included and what isn't included, that would be enacted over, I think it's a two-reading, I'm pretty sure it's a two-reading ordinance. So there would be a couple of additional times that you could speak to the ordinance after this evening.
And how would I know when those are?
I think we've got it scheduled for, let me just double-check, sorry.
After this, you're saying after this meeting, there's two readings?
I'll let you know if you need to come.
Okay. That'll be fine. He's my councilman.
Yes. We've got it scheduled right now for the 17th and the 24th, but things are sort of moving around. We'll have a two-reading ordinance, there'll be two readings on two of the remaining three Mondays in the month. And we'll, we'll let you know. The council's going to talk about what would be in the ordinance. We're going to have that discussion this evening.
You might not even survive tonight.
Okay. Well, I mean, thank you all.
I can count.
Well, let me know if you need information or data that speaks to sort of a broader issue, which is what I was, you know, be careful what you end up, you know, wish for and get.
Right, right. Now, we're dealing with a number of alternatives, and what will come out of the discussion this evening is one of those alternatives. And that's only one. So that may not even happen this evening.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the voiceless Ethiopian people. I would like to express my sincere appreciation to the mayor, city council, and the residents of Tacoma Park for their willingness to hear our concern, to support our cause. My name is Billy Sambeth, a word-for-take Tacoma Park resident for over a quarter century. Our group, composed of proactive individual citizens affiliated at national level with different states in promoting security, democracy, economic development, and the freedom of speech, in particular for Ethiopian people and in general in the world community. We are not a political pundit nor politicians, but we are concerned citizens in different academic disciplines. Among us, there are medical doctors, engineers, information technologies, specialists, entrepreneurs, and pharmacists. Our group has lobbied Congress to pass a bill to support Ethiopian Freedom Act, known as HR 4423, now changed to HR 5860, which recently passed the full international committee on June 27, 2006. We are strongly organized, as Margaret Miltseid quotes, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful committed citizens can change the world," unquote. Some of you probably wonder why you have to know about Ethiopia. Let me be very brief. Ethiopia is the oldest and only independent nation in Africa. It's also known as the Bissiniya in the pre-Christian era, located in the Horn of Africa, separated by Red Sea from Middle East, border Sudan, north and west, Kenya by south, southeast by Somalia. It's a country where mankind originated. Ethiopia accepted Christianity as early as 4th AD. Ethiopia is, was mentioned 33 times in both the Holy Bible and in the Quran. Islam was introduced in Ethiopia in the 6th century. It's a country where both Christians and Muslims live in harmony. Ethiopia has its own alphabet and script. It was the first nation who taught the world how to sow seeds and harvest for food. Ethiopia is number one in water resource in Africa and is the sixth largest in the world. Ethiopia's strategic location and hydro politics of the Nile River made it the focal point of geopolitics and superpower rivalry. The people of Ethiopia had a long-lasting cherished relation with the people of United States of America for over a century. Two years ago, we celebrated our 100-year anniversary at Howard University. Within these 100 years, we have made many accomplishments. The first Ethiopian student started studying in 1920, and until this day, there are many Ethiopians attending the university. In 1950, during the Korean War, Ethiopian soldiers fought side by side with the United States Army for collective security and world peace. The United States government supported the high-syllabic autocratic rule for over 50 years. The people of Ethiopia revolted against the government in 1974 and were replaced by another military dictator of Mengis O'Haile-Mare, shifting the alliance towards the Soviet Union. When the Cold War ended, the Mengis regime was overrun with the help of the United States government. The ethnic-based Tigray People Liberation Front, in alliance with other ethnic groups, formed Ethiopian People Liberation and Democratic Front, and seized power in May 1991, which led the country into ethnic division and civil warfare, which resulted in more poverty and destitution. We believe injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Therefore, we ask the city council and the mayor to hear and take a just action in this endeavor in Ethiopia. Thank you for listening.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate you all coming to speak with me also about this issue.
Absolutely.
As I said, you know, I would be happy to put it before the council. It won't be this, before the end of the month when we go on recess. It would probably have to be later in the year. But I appreciate the information that you brought me, and I will put it before the council.
Thank you very much, and we have also a material to be handed over to the city councils. I appreciate the efforts of Mayor Porter and Terry Simmons, for all the help that you have really, you know, the efforts that you gave it to us. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think the additional information for the council would be very helpful. Thank you.
This will be a continuation from my colleague Bill. Mayor Porter, honorable council members, ladies and gentlemen, guests, and fellow citizens. My name is Kasai Yaliu, and I am a naturalized Ethiopian American, living in the United States since 1996. On behalf of Ethiopian Americans living in the city of Tacoma Park and DC metropolitan area, we would like first to extend our gratitude for having this opportunity to speak with you about the voiceless. It is the policy of the United States to support the advancement of human rights, democracy, and economic freedom in Ethiopia, as well as other African countries, in concert with the United States security interests, in order to better enable Ethiopia to play a leading role in participating with the United States and other countries in fostering stability, democracy, and economic development in Africa. Ethiopia has a central role to play in United States foreign policy. As the oldest independent nation in Africa and a strategic ally for centuries, it is a key member of the African Union. Nevertheless, the ruling dictators who have held power now for 15 years threaten that the progress may thereby affect the interests of the United States and Ethiopia. Over the last 15 years, Human Rights Watch, Amnesty International, as well as numerous international organizations, have reported the harassment, detentions, assassinations, beatings, ethnic cleansing, suppressing independent media vital to any democracy, and even torture of critics of the government. The list is just too long to list here. In 2005, after tremendous pressure from the United States and the European Union, the government of Ethiopia was forced to hold open elections. International election observers reported the turnout of millions of eligible voters in the elections, further confirming the desire of the citizens of Ethiopia to express their political will through the ballot and their desire for change in the government after 14 years of brutality. After the election, indeed, the dictatorial government responded by detaining all the opposition party leadership members, civic leaders, lawyers, and journalists to be charged with treason and genocide for winning an election. Over 110,000 civilians of opposition members were rounded up and detained in civil, in remote locations, far from family members and beloved ones. Several hundreds, innocent civilians, including women and children, were gunned down in the broad daylight for demonstrating against the dictatorial government for vote-reinging. Despite the other factors, our government, the United States government, has continued to provide and expand aid to the authoritarian government. Ethiopia is today another example where we can learn how part of our foreign policy is failing as we continue to assist the authoritarian self-appointed governments because of our concern of terrorism and strategic interests. As possible pressure remedy to the problems in relation to Ethiopia, we would like to lay out serious recommendations to the city and kindly ask you all to denounce any kind of support to self-appointed authoritarian dictators all over the world, including Ethiopia. We commend you to call the government of Ethiopia to, first, immediately and unconditionally, release all the prisoners of consigns detained in Ethiopia, including members of the parliament, human rights defenders, independent journalists, and nonviolent student protesters. In the interest of time, I would like to conclude by saying acknowledge the fact that the success of The first Ethiopian student started studying in 1920, and until this day, there are many Ethiopians attending the university. In 1950, during the Korean War, Ethiopian soldiers fought side by side with the United States Army for collective security and world peace. The United States government supported the high school autocratic rule for over fifty years. The people of Ethiopia revolted against the government in 1974 and were replaced by another military dictator of Mengesu Hailemari, shifting the alliance towards the Soviet Union. When the Cold War ended, the Mengesu regime was overrun with the help of the United States government. The ethnic-based Tigray People Liberation Front, in alliance with other ethnic groups, formed Ethiopian People Liberation Democratic Front and seized power in May 1991, which led the country into ethnic division and civil warfare, which resulted in more poverty and destitution. We believe injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Therefore, we ask the city council and the mayor to hear and take a just action in this endeavor in Ethiopia. Thank you for listening.
Well, thank, thank you very much, and I appreciate you all coming to speak with me also about this issue.
Absolutely.
As I said, you know, I would be happy to put it before the council. It won't be this, before the end of the month when we go on recess. It would probably have to be later in the year. But I appreciate the information that you brought me and I will put it before the council.
Thank you very much, and we have also a material to be handed over to the city council. I appreciate the efforts of Mayor Porter and Terry Simmons for all the help that you have really, you know, the efforts that you give it to us. Thanks.
Thank you, and I, and I think the additional information for the council would be very helpful. Thank you.
This will be a continuation from my colleague Bill. Mayor Porter, honorable council members, ladies and gentlemen, guests, and fellow citizens. My name is Kasai Yalou, and I am a naturalized Ethiopian American living in the United States since 1996. On behalf of Ethiopian Americans living in the city of Tacoma Park and D.C. metropolitan area, we would like first to extend our gratitude for having this opportunity to speak with you about the voiceless. It is the policy of the United States to support the advancement of human rights, democracy, and economic freedom in Ethiopia as well as other African countries in concert with the United States security interests in order to better enable Ethiopia to play a leading role in participating with the United States and other countries in fostering stability, democracy, and economic development in Africa. Ethiopia has a central role to play in United States foreign policy. As the oldest independent nation in Africa and a strategic ally for centuries, it is a key member of the African Union. Nevertheless, the ruling dictators who have held power now for fifteen years threaten that the progress may thereby affect the interest of the United States and Ethiopia. Over the last fifteen years, Human Rights Watch, Amnesty International, as well as numerous international organizations, have reported the harassment, detentions, assassinations, beatings, written cleansing, suppressing independent media vital to any democracy, and even torture of critics of the government. The list is just too long to list here. In 2005, after tremendous pressure from the United States and the European Union, the government of Ethiopia was forced to hold open elections. International election observers reported the turnout of millions of eligible voters in the elections, further confirming the desire of the citizens of Ethiopia to express their political will through the ballot and their desire for change in the government after fourteen years of brutality. After the election, indeed, the dictatorship government responded by detaining all the opposition party leadership members, civic leaders, lawyers, and journalists to be charged with treason and genocide for winning an election. Over one hundred and ten thousand civilians of opposition members were rounded up and detained in civil, in remote locations far from family members and beloved ones. Several hundreds, innocent civilians, including women and children, were gunned down in the broad daylight for demonstrating against the dictatorship government for vote-reinging. Despite the other factors, our government, the United States government, has continued to provide and expedite aid to the authoritarian government. Ethiopia is today another example where we can learn how part of our foreign policy is failing as we continue to assist the authoritarian self-appointed governments because of our concern of terrorism and strategic interests. As possible pressure remedy to the problems in relation to Ethiopia, we would like to lay out series of recommendations to the city and kindly ask you all to denounce any kind of support to self-appointed authoritarian dictators all over the world, including Ethiopia. We commend you to call the government of Ethiopia to first immediately and unconditionally release all the prisoners of conscience detained in Ethiopia, including members of the parliament, human rights defenders, independent journalists, and nonviolent student protesters. In the interest of time, I would like to conclude by saying acknowledge the fact that the success of, and our interest is in any part of the world depended upon promotion of human rights and democracy. We would like to urge you to make a resolution that supports the above recommendation in regard to the situation in Ethiopia and also to appoint an bipartisan Free Ethiopia Committee to oversee the process. And I would like also finally to ask you to support H R five six eight zero, which was proposed by Congressman Christopher Smith, and which has passed now to go to the House. Thank you very much for your opportunity.
Well, thank you for coming and bringing that information to us. Thank you.
And I, and I also have a copy of the bill that you've talked about, and I'll make sure that my colleagues have a copy of that. And when we do schedule that, we can talk about your request for a Free Ethiopia Committee and also a resolution of support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor of Tacoma Park and the council members. I don't have to waste your time, and most of the things are mentioned by the two friends. Just I want to mention maybe a few points. You guys may ask why you need to consider the Ethiopian issue because you are very far from Ethiopia, but we thought you have to consider the Ethiopian issue because one thing, there are more than a hundred Ethiopians living in Tacoma Park. This, and also in addition to that, there are thousands of Ethiopians living in Silver Spring area and in the county, in the Montgomery County. I guess in general, we anticipate or we expect there are more than twenty thousand Ethiopians living. Most of these Ethiopians are naturalized citizens. They are Americans, are Ethiopian Americans. So the, all the problems happening in Ethiopia will affect us. We are working here, we have family, we have children to raise. So anything happening there will really affect us here. We have relatives, some of them are thrown into prison, there are friends from our childhood who might suffering in concert or in prison in Ethiopia. So really, we are working here, we are educated, of course, by the Ethiopian people, but we are serving in this country eventually. So really, we are asking you, we know also the Tacoma Park residents are highly educated people, highly aware of the world, and they are aware of the democratic process in general. So we, we thought this is one of the places where we can get support for our demand. So one of the supports so far, we get it from Congressman Christopher Smith from New Jersey. He introduced a bill as most now supported or sponsored by more than twenty-five congressmen and women. So really, we are asking you also to support him and to act. So really, that's why we are around here and asking you your favor to support our struggle for a good day, independence, and freedom for Ethiopian people. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming this evening.
My name is Mark Castle. I represent some landlords in Tacoma Park. I wanted to take another three minutes to comment on some of the proposals for the council. Tonight, you're going to be talking about exemptions from rent control. And in general, I think lessening the load on landlords in Tacoma Park is a good thing, and I think allowing nonprofits to collect higher rents so they can subsidize other apartments is also a good thing. I'm a strong advocate of affordable housing. But what you're doing points out a problem, which is that if nonprofit landlords need higher rents in order to operate their buildings, what does that say about for-profit landlords? They need it at least as much. And I think what the council is doing with the Rent Stabilization Act, which essentially is, back up. The council's been looking at this issue, I think, since January, and that doesn't include 2004, 2005, when it spent quite a bit of time on the issue and nothing came of it. It's been six months already. It's not on the agenda for the rest of this month. August, you're off. I didn't see it on the rolling agenda for September. So we're looking at maybe October, November, before the council's tackling it again. There's something wrong here where probably the biggest transfer of money and wealth in the city, an amount that probably runs, according to the city's figures, ten to thirteen million dollars a year, seventy, eighty percent, equivalent to seventy or eighty percent of the city's budget, isn't being pushed forward a little bit more aggressively. Rent control as it is right now is not sustainable. And even if the market softens somewhat, it is still hugely profitable for landlords to convert to condominium. And the longer this goes on, especially since it's had some publicity lately and with utility costs going up, and I know the council's beginning to look at the issue of surcharges for utilities, because I got something in the mail on it today, but that's not there. And you're going to end up with homeowners who are relatively wealthy, single-family homeowners, I mean. You're going to have those people who can afford condominiums, which are probably at income levels well above the average for Tacoma Park or for Tacoma Park renters. For a three hundred thousand condo, if you don't have a fifty, sixty thousand dollar a year household income, you're not going to be able to even qualify for it. And then you're going to have people who qualify for rental assistance, and you're going to completely be restructuring the social fabric of the city, probably in ways that you can't control or intend. The city has an opportunity to move forward, to do something with vacancy decontrol, and I've talked to all the council members, there is support, and a majority of council members for some form of vacancy decontrol. This issue needs to move forward, or you're going to end up just illustrating the rule of unintended consequences. I would urge the council not to just stop with, you know, do nonprofits get the exemption or do single-family homeowners get the exemption? You've got to do something about rent control, and you've got to do it soon. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. As the person who does the agendas, I can say that when it says on the list of the rolling agenda that items in the future are tentative, it means tentative. I have not yet laid out all of our agendas for the fall. I'm trying to get through fitting everything we need to fit on the agendas in July. And I can tell you that the decision we're discussing this evening is going to probably be the only thing that we can finalize before the end of this month. However, I haven't set up the schedule for this fall yet, and I will, rent stabilization issues are one of the issues that I want to get to this fall. So because you don't see it on the agenda right now doesn't mean it won't be there.
I'm Bruce Sidwell. I live at seven two oh nine Spruce Avenue, and I'm among other things, a president of Friends of Sligo Creek. And I, later this evening, I know the council will be taking up how to create an efficient mechanism for enforcement of illegal discharge in Sligo Creek. Marty Idner of the Friends of Sligo Creek, I think, is expected to say a few words about that issue at that time. But I just wanted to say that our organization is glad to see the council's and city's interest in this matter and look forward to a solution that is clear and effective. There's been some confusion among our members just exactly how to report things and what should happen, and even sometimes among the, the employees of the city and the county have occasionally had issues with this. I also wanted to voice at this time, since it's kind of a related issue, the Friends of Sligo Creek's sadness that I think all of you share, really about the damage that was done to the creek and the park by their recent deluge. I want to call it a monsoon because it went on for a while, but in fact, it was, it was, it was impressive. Trees are down, there's lots of damage by, to the trails and the road, and the most important, I think, that is the tons of dirt, really, that has smothered life in the creek and then moved on down, actually all the way down to, they're detecting, you know, this rainstorm all the way into the Chesapeake. Now granted, now, the, the thing about it is, that I think you all understand, is that the park and planning really controls the park and the creek itself, but in fact, virtually all of Tacoma Park is in Sligo Creek watershed and has an impact on the quantities of water that go to it. And granted that the city can't do much about rain, at least not yet under your current administration, but I, I think it's, it's clear that, that we all really need to work harder together with the county and the state to do a better job with runoff. It's just, just untenable at this point. Our group thanks the city, actually, for the efforts that we've had so far, working with your city engineer, Ali, and others, you know, on the rain gardens and other kinds of efforts that we had. The committee on the environment had a rain barrel effort, and there's a lot of other things that can be done, I'm sure. I just wanted to make sure, though, that, that we all begin to think much more, much more vigorously, make this much more of a priority on stormwater management in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kim Brooks, Tulip. I'll be really quick. I promised to come back with a few things on Save Tacoma, and I just, I have heard from a couple of you about some email that you've seen regarding the work the citizens are doing on kind of mapping out the program. I've reached out to city manager Matthews, and I know she has other things going on, but given some of the timeline and that you're going on recess, I just wanted to point out that I think we need a counterpart on the, the city side to just kind of transition some of these ideas to whoever it is that's going to be running the program, only because in the absence of identification who that person is, there's kind of a void, and the citizens are kind of grappling with some things that I think are probably, could be easily remedied by, or whoever that point person's going to be. So to the extent that when the city manager comes back, you can work with her to identify that person, that'd be great.
Okay. That, that's a good point. Maybe we can ask the assistant city manager to follow up on that. Yes, thank you. Anyone else? All right. We will move on to the next item, which is the city manager's comments. And sitting in for the city manager is Wayne Hobbs, our assistant city manager.
I really have no comments tonight. I, I can tell you that Barbara's mother passed this weekend, as I think you've been told, and that the memorial service is going to be held Sunday evening in Norfolk. They are not requesting flowers. There are some organizations that we can contribute to, and on behalf of the council and the city, following our established policy, I'll make a contribution to, to one of the funds.
Okay. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Mr. Hobbs, during our last council session before all the rains, I expressed concern about the storm sewer at the back of the library, near the rear entrance of the library. And I, I know that nothing was done about that before the storms, and in fact, the water, as we discussed, had threatened the library and come into the computer center. I wonder if you could give us an update on that storm sewer?
Darrell Braithwaite in Public Works, as well as our engineer, are looking very carefully at it. There is a debate going on with the knot company as to whether or not something was done that caused some of that, and we don't know all the answers yet, but we're pursuing, pursuing it very aggressively. If we have to do it ourselves, it's probably going to cost seventy thousand, eighty thousand dollars to make the necessary corrections.
Okay. And, and the other concern that I expressed was the fact that the ground at the library and, and technology center slopes away from the parking lot, down right up against the wall, so that any water doesn't run away from the building, it runs into the building.
I understand, and my, and that's being addressed also along with all the issues.
Okay. And then one other related matter, it's not really related to the community center, but since I brought up the issue of storm sewers, I would like to call Ms. Braithwaite's attention to the fact that the storm sewer on Lincoln Avenue near Maple evidently has, I don't know whether it's actually plugged up or not, but it has a lot of stone and gravel and dirt washed down into it from the events of the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the, the sitting manager? All right. We will now move on to the next item on our agenda, and apologies to the folks who have been waiting. We are going to do a couple of interviews of individuals who are interested in our Health Services Impact Committee, Joan Clement and Kermit Nettemberg. Do you want to come forward to the table here? We, we, what we've been doing with the previous interviews, is we've been interviewing all the individuals who are interested. We've been interviewing them together and have asked, you know, questions, whatever questions the council feels it wants answered, and then have each individual answer in turn. And usually what I start off is just by asking each person about their interest in the Health Services Impact Committee and what they want to bring to the committee, what they feel they as an individual can bring to the committee. And Ms. Clement, do you want to start off?
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm a longtime resident of Tacoma Park and have spent most of my career working as a mental health administrator. I know a lot about the public mental health system, public policy at the county and state level, and healthcare administration. I've also worked with seniors on the board of the senior living community in Bethesda. And most recently, I've started working at Washington Adventist Hospital and am doing discharge planning. So I'm beginning to learn more about the healthcare side. And I just thought that that experience, plus being an employee at the hospital, and might provide a unique perspective for the committee.
I, I appreciate that, and I should also have noted at the beginning that we've also got the information that both of you all have sent to the city clerk, and we're very appreciative of your coming forward and volunteering. Did you want to respond to that?
I've been involved with healthcare management and administration on and off for more than twenty years, mostly as a consultant and as someone meeting with boards and planning committees. I thought I perhaps could bring something to the table. I'm also currently involved as the administrative pastor at Sligo Church, and we obviously have an interest in Tacoma Park, and this could be a fairly major change in Tacoma Park. We would like to participate with the city and see what can be done from our side to be helpful, and also just simply be involved in the community.
I also remember from some of the contacts that I've had from Sligo Church is that you all are quite involved with low-income families in the community, both through the church and through Adventist Community Services.
Yes. And want that to be a significant part of the ministry that the church continues.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Are there other questions that the council? I, before I, before I ask additional follow-up questions, I'll give other council members a chance if you have questions that you want to follow up on.
I was just going to comment that perhaps you could be helpful in persuading the hospital to look at some other options that don't involve as radical a move as they've proposed. And we think there are some other options, and perhaps your expertise in management might help us come about looking at some of those choices.
I think one of the reasons I'd kind of like to be involved is that Sligo Church has a really strong vested interest in seeing the least disruption possible to that area of this city. We feel like there are valuable things happening there now, and we'd like to see as much of it remain as possible, or any kind of new uses fit with some of the same mission-oriented goals that are currently doing.
One of the, the other issues that I'm particularly interested in is, we've had a really varied group of people volunteer for this committee, which has been absolutely wonderful from my perspective. And we are trying through this committee to reach out to all the aspects of our community. And so one of the things that I think is particularly important, regardless of how diverse a community, a committee we appoint, it still won't include, obviously, everyone in the community. So one of the things that I would be interested in would be ideas that you might have for reaching out to other particularly vulnerable parts of our community and sort of incorporating their ideas and concerns into the work that the committee does.
Let me respond to that if I may. You know, Sligo Church is a pretty big church on the corner, and we do have a significant number of members who are in those vulnerable communities. And they have approached our church leadership saying, what can we do? And we've said, let's do our best to share some of the concerns we hear from the members. We obviously would work to listen in other ways as well.
Okay. I don't know, Ms. Clement, whether you have any thoughts on that, about ways that we could reach out to could reach out to vulnerable community members, or anyone else who might have a concern about these issues, the health services available to people in our community. Seems like you have a really good background for that, having done a number of things in that area.
I'm sure I can figure something out, but I don't, nothing comes at the moment. I mean, it's, I've just begun thinking at the city level. I haven't really participated much in city-level activities, but...
Okay.
Except for the co-op.
Well, years ago.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I think the important thing to me is people volunteer for this committee is that you have an appreciation that we're not talking about, you know, the whole hospital move. We're really talking about the health impacts on the community, and what the health needs are for the community, and not really, at this point, talking about whether or not the hospital actually moves, or can we talk it into doing something else, or what are we going to do with the property. And I'd just like to make sure that you both understand that's the purpose of this committee.
Yeah.
It's probably worth noting that several of us have had discussions with people at the county level who are interested in putting together sort of an assessment of health services across the county. And one of the things that we would like to do with our committee would be to create a very strong liaison with the effort that the county is doing, both to bring our community concerns to the county's probably wider-based and better-funded effort, and also to make sure that we are able to use the information that they produce, that it's helpful for our purposes also. And so to try and get the information flowing in both directions. And that's something that I know I and several other council members are interested in doing, and just wanted to give you that information. And I am open to however the committee would like to work that. One of the things that might be useful would be to get some members from our committee formally connected to the county effort. I don't know if the county's going to have an advisory committee or whatever, but that would be another thing that we might call on the committee to do.
I was going to add, I mean, the county has said they were going to have a committee, and though it's not the charge of this committee to evaluate the move, the fact is that it is the charge of the county's committee to look at the impact, it is motivated by this decision to move, and it's the charge of the county committee to look at the impacts. And one of the outcomes may be that healthcare needs can't be met in the event of that move. And it may be one of your conclusions is that in assessing the healthcare needs, that, you know, the response to those healthcare needs can't be met in the face of a move like that. So I mean, it's not your charge to per se evaluate the move, but I also think it's difficult to separate an evaluation of healthcare needs from the implications of the move.
Well, I very much appreciate both of your volunteering for this, and I think that, I personally think both of you would add to the diverse expertise and points of view of the committee that we're pulling together. So I very much appreciate you being here. Thank you. What we're probably going to do is, I believe we have a couple more interviews that we have to do. Jesse, are we talking about September for the final one at this point, ones, or are we finished with them? Okay, we may be finished with the interviews for the committee, and if that's the case, then we may go ahead and do appointments. But if we have to do some more, we thought we would go ahead and interview all those who are interested, and then go ahead and appoint the committee and let the committee get started.
Okay.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Appreciate it. The next item on our agenda, we're moving on to our special session items. The next item is a discussion of the purchase of a bus for the recreation department. A small bus, a big van, small bus, whatever you want to call it.
The small, this is about, I think this is the third discussion we're having regarding this vehicle. Just to review, it's a small bus, which is really a converted van, but it has a capacity for 16 passengers and two wheelchairs, or the seats fold down so that we can have no wheelchairs and 20 passengers. And this was per the recommendation of the council. You had recommended we get the larger vehicle, which does kick in the requirement for a commercial driver's license. And we have the bid from this company who does have the state bid for buses, and it's called the Colonial Equipment Company, and they're out of Frederick. The price of the bus is $53,191 with options, and the only other expense would be the title and tax, the excise tax. And so the budget was approved for $56,000. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Move it.
It's moved and seconded. Joy of questions?
I'm thrilled that we are taking this up so quickly after the budget took effect, and I really appreciate all the work you've done to bring this to the council. The commercial licensing, is that something that we have staff ready to go on?
We don't. We'll have to get ready. The turnaround on this order is probably three months or so from when we place the order, so we'll be training our staff, and we'll probably be looking for some part-time help from the community, people already have a CDL license who might want to help us on the weekends or in the late afternoons.
That would be great. I would think somebody with experience might be called for in this respect. And I really would love to move this. Didn't move fast enough.
And I just want to reinforce my sense that the larger bus with the requirement for the CDL is the way to go, because I think the opportunity to have specific training for handling a larger vehicle will, in the long run, prove valuable.
And I want to thank you for the recommendation. I know you had asked the council for this last year, and we didn't, couldn't fit it in the budget, but this year we did. And I think it's now that our senior room is open, and now that we have much more space for activities by seniors and people with disabilities, I think that this is really essential. I'm glad we're moving forward with it. And I would agree with what Bruce said. I think that the larger bus, even if it does require the commercial driver's license. One quick question, you said the cost of obtaining a commercial driver's license is $50 per license, and then there's some kind of driver training. Can that be covered out of the department's budget? That's not going to be a problem, is it?
Yes, we have a training budget.
Okay, all right.
I would just like to add, super, you know, it's long overdue. It's super for the seniors, it's super for the kids. It's just going to be great for the rec department and be able to even do better use of the facility here.
We appreciate that you found a bus under Maryland state contract that's less expensive than we anticipated.
Well, thank you all for your support, and I think I speak for the community that it's really going to be used a lot and going to make a big difference, so appreciate your support.
Okay.
One last question. I know that the county does rebating for senior programming if you have a vehicle. Can we look into that as soon as possible?
Yes, we'll be looking into that. My man Howard Cohen has mentioned that several times. He's had conversations with some officials. I have not had the conversation, but we'll certainly be looking to do that soon.
Right. I think that Gaithersburg and Rockville city managers are probably our best resource for this. They can tell us what they're getting because of their senior programming and infrastructure, and then we can approach the county asking for something similar.
I think we probably already have any information.
Yeah, I appreciate your reminding us of that, because when we were at the Maryland Municipal League, we did have an opportunity to speak with some of the department heads of the state, and they did send me information on that that I will forward to you.
Great, I appreciate that.
Okay. Are there any additional council comments? Are there any public comments on this proposed purchase? All right, seeing none. This is a single reading ordinance, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Seadens?
Aye.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
The ordinance passes. The next item is an ordinance on the purchase of a dump truck.
Move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and...
Didn't even need to come forward, but you've seen this one before. We purchased the same one last year before the end of the fiscal year. This is also in the '07 budget, in the capital budget, so we're using the same competitive bid that was awarded the previous time. As long as we get the order in before the FY08, or I mean, the 2008 model year kicks in, we'll be able to receive a vehicle at that price.
Okay.
This is a replacement of an existing vehicle that's making it its use a lot.
And I think you have a couple of dump trucks, right?
Oh, yes, we have two of these size dump trucks, F-350s. We're increasing the size to F-450s. We also have two other larger dumps beyond that. These would serve our mid-sized dump trucks.
Okay.
And if you're wondering, an example of that kind of vehicle, my dump truck is a 450.
Oh, okay. I know what size your dump truck is.
450.
Okay. Are there any additional council questions or comments? Are there any public comments? All right, this also is a single reading ordinance, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Bear?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
That ordinance also passes. Thank you. Just in time, the next item up is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing a contract for rent stabilization and recodification services. Now, you spoke to us in a work session about this, and do you want to just very briefly talk about the ordinance and the timing?
Essentially, what we're proposing is that the council is at a point in your discussions regarding rent stabilization that it would be appropriate to consider entering into a contract with an individual for assistance in preparing the legislation that would actually take some of the concepts that you endorsed and put some meat to them, so that we'd have our language to respond to as far as how particular items might be specifically addressed within the ordinance itself. Ken Sigmund, who's with the office of, the city attorney's office, has identified an individual, Mr. Kenneth Barr, who seems to be an appropriate resource. He's an attorney and has worked with a number of communities on the West Coast, has been retained to work on their behalf in terms of rewriting language, ordinances and legislation dealing with rent stabilization, also has a fair amount of experience in terms of developing and reviewing surcharges as they relate to utility costs, et cetera. Included in your agenda packet is a scope of services that was provided by Mr. Barr. I'll confirmate your conversation if I can, and we're looking at a cost now to exceed $9,500.
Okay.
Do you have to move it to discuss it?
If there's just questions, we don't, but if you'd like to move it, okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Bruce.
If you can help me understand the timing of this in terms of what he's going to do and how that fits with where we are in our discussions, because I'm having a little trouble feeling like we've gotten to the point in our discussions where we have a good feel for where we're heading and how he'll be able to use that direction from us to be pointed in his drafting rather than founder a little.
We've gone through and looked at the, reviewed the minutes and our notes and the tapes of the various council meetings. And frankly, you've come to, you've reached consensus on a number of topics. Admittedly, that's broad consensus, so you haven't worked out the nitty-gritty in terms of rents upon vacancy, things like that. But you have come to some agreement in the, on that particular topic, for example, that you're open to increasing rents above the maximum allowable rent increase that you have now. You're open to investigating utility surcharges, et cetera. And what we're hoping we can do at this point in time is take that general information and work with Mr. Barr in drafting language that will be easier to respond to in terms of specific questions you might have, in terms of how the utility surcharges, for example, would be structured.
So that he might be supplying some option, different options for language depending on where we might want to go, or he would be drafting specific things for us to kind of respond to and come back and say, "No, tweak it here, or no, change that."
The second option.
The second.
So that would mean he wouldn't be developing alternatives, he would be developing one proposal, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. We can do either. It would depend on basically the, my preference would be to have him develop one option so that you can look at that and tweak it. There will be admittedly a couple of areas where there may be one or two options, and we can go through and clarify that with him.
So that he might be starting with the ones that seem to be the clearest, and then as we move forward, add other pieces in?
Correct. Given the council's previous interest in continuing to process or proceed with this whole process, and to get something that you can actually act on in the fall, we really need to get going on at least little bits and pieces of it now, rather than leaving it until September when we actually start looking at the possibility of even drafting in language.
I guess I'm comfortable if those things were, we've reached some broad agreement. And I thought the electric or the energy surcharges were an area that there was agreement, and I'm happy to see a proposal that we can then tweak. But I think there are some other areas where hopefully he'll start on this, and we will, as Bruce said, provide additional feedback. Because I don't want this person doing more, you could do 10 different things, we've already seen 10 different things. We probably should reach some agreement about where we want to go with some of these things, and then have them give us language, because I thought the purpose was to have somebody who had expertise and background in writing language be in a position to give us language for things that we wanted to do, because we don't have a law, again, which is subject to multiple interpretations and problems, as we are now.
We're working towards the same goal.
Okay, and the other thing is, I thought we were going to try to get some things, for example, like the energy surcharge, done early and separate, because that was a more pressing issue. And I wasn't averse, and still not averse, to seeing a piece like that come forward before everything else is done, because if that's potentially a serious problem, then we, I thought we had said we would deal with some of those things with more immediacy than others. I don't see the vacancy decontrol, whether it matters, whether it's another month discussion or a two-month discussion. This may be something which is of somewhat greater importance.
Frankly, the utility surcharge is the most clearest direction that you've given us.
Yeah.
And you've also indicated a preference for fast-tracking that, for lack of a better word.
Terry?
Thank you. I think I'm going down the same road as my colleagues and their previous comments on this, but I guess in summary, the way I see it is loosely defined tasks are great from a contractor's perspective, and I don't see that we can, that we're ready to define, clearly define, specific tasks that we want the contractor to work on in helping with the recodification at this point. I don't think we've evolved to that point yet. You talk about that the council has reached consensus on some things, but maybe you can point me to the document that lists those, so that we can say, "Yes, we have reached consensus on that." I think the example you gave is something maybe that's the clearest one with the utilities, but I don't remember seeing a list where we've said yes on this and no on that, and actually reached any kind of a consensus on it. And I would be reticent to contracting for any services to refine things until we have a very concise list of what it is that we're looking at the individual to work on, and if we're looking for options to come back, a concise list of the options that we want to see.
But don't get ahead of us in terms of having this person write stuff.
No.
And just...
Did Kendra, do you have a?
I just wanted to say that I think, one thing that's important, and one reason we're interested in having Dr. Barr prepare the ordinance, is because it's important to have something that works as a comprehensive whole. And, for example, the energy surcharge would impact what the annual rent stabilization allowance should be. It would affect how the hardship petition should be calculated, hardship petition and the capital improvement petitions. the capital improvement petitions, there's a lot of interplay between them. So I'm not sure, I mean, I think it's more important to give him a picture of generally what the council wants to do, which I think we can see a consensus. Sorry, for us to tell you we just see a consensus if you don't agree that there's any consensus, but...
I'd like to see it written down so we can see whether there is consensus or not.
Maybe we could summarize it.
It's the dreaded matrix that I did not include in the packet this evening. We can get that information for you.
Yeah, I...
Don't do the dreaded matrix. Give us a list of things, just go down a nice little list that says, we think you can do this, we think we can do that, because I know that, you know, there's a sense that we don't want to do hardship petitions, but, you know, I still had questions as to what the, for example, the alternative was, is it possible to use a formula on net operating income? I would love to have a person like that give an answer, but that's, to me, getting expertise and advice from him on things like that is different than saying, draft this. And maybe if you use that person to say, if this is what you want to accomplish, here are some things you can do, that would be really helpful, because we don't have those answers yet, but I wouldn't want you drafting the replacement for the hardship petition yet.
Actually, that's what I was going to say. I think that it would be helpful to have somebody who could give us that kind of response, where if we say, for example, we want to look at a different way of doing X, that they can say, well, there are some alternatives that have been used, and this is how they work, and if you do this, then that sort of boxes you in on this other issue, because the piece that we're, that is going to cause us the most difficulty, I think, is fitting it all together, and it would be very helpful to have somebody with this kind of experience who can say to us, all right, if you want to do utility surcharge, you should realize that it's going to create a difficulty if you also want to do this other thing.
And we believe Mr. Barr, or Dr. Barr, has that expertise.
That would be helpful.
And if I can just say the point that I was going to make a couple of minutes ago was, I think, pretty well gotten to in these comments. My concern is that you can't see the forest for the trees, and we get hung up in the trees, and we never see the relationship of the trees and the forest, and therefore, when it all comes to the end, we've got all these little pieces and they don't hang together, and we still haven't had the discussion about the broad structure for how this all fits together. So to the extent that he can help us understand those relationships, that would be good, because if we don't understand those relationships and we don't see the forest, we can go on forever on this.
Well, my personal feeling is that we spent a great deal of time, especially recently, on the forest, and I would like to stop that discussion and get back to the trees so we can tell if we're going to actually make some changes and not be debating alternative philosophies forever.
I agree.
Well, I know, but it's real easy for us in these discussions to then get bogged back down in the trees and never get back to the forest.
Right. Well, I think we need to do both things.
And you're a tree kind of organization person.
And I'm just hesitant to start the meter running...
Happy to stand up for trees.
To start the meter running on a consultant until we know better of what it is that we want to do, and I can see value in having the expert advice when we get a better sense of where we're going, but I don't think we're there yet.
I think there are pieces we can take advice on. I don't mind giving them this. I just think you've got to tell us what you're using the person for and get a sense of what you're going to task them with. I mean, maybe that could solve the problem, because I don't want to have to wait till this is all done and then start the thing going, and if there are pieces they can give us advice on, I wouldn't mind getting a memo saying, we're going to have the consultant, use the consultant, look at this, so we know what they're looking at, and if we think they've gotten too far ahead, we can say, not yet.
That's fine, but typically, we don't have that level of control, and, you know, this not to exceed $9,500 is fine for today, but I've seen too often where those not to exceeds continue to exceed.
Right. Well...
Can you give us that level of control?
We will do our best.
Let me just make a suggestion. One of the ways that we have begun using the city attorney on some things is to say, we want to know X, and how much would it cost for us to find out X, and maybe we could use some kind of a situation, some kind of a control like that, where we say, we would like to know what this is, give us a sense of how much it would cost, and then we'll decide whether to go forward or not, if the council wants to get to that level of control.
What I'd like to propose, I agree with the conversation that, where it's headed. The $9,500, I would hate to be cutting into that with things that the council really isn't interested in seeing, and before the second reading, it seems to me that there is some idea from Ken and Sarah about what there was consensus on. If you could do a very short list, because my feeling is that it's a very short list at this point of what there's been consensus on and what you might task this consultant with at first before further consensus is reached, then I would be comfortable voting on it at second reading. I do think that we should have some kind of feedback mechanism like that as we go forward, so that there, this $9,500 is kind of the maximum amount we're looking at getting from this person or giving this person for the work that we want them to do. I think it is a reasonable amount. He does look experienced and able to do what we need done, but I don't want him utilized when really we haven't gotten to the conclusions that I think need to be gotten to for the language to be developed.
I kind of agree with Councilmember Austin Lane in that I'm willing to vote for this if we have the concise list of items where we have consensus. I don't think we have that, and without that, I don't think I can vote for this.
Okay. Does the council have any other questions? Okay. Are there any public comments on this ordinance at first reading? This is the first of two readings.
Yes. A couple of things. I agree with the council members who think that you ought to be structuring any kind of contract like this for specific issues. I've looked at some of his writings. I mean, he spent his entire career defending rent control. I think that needs to be taken into consideration. But that aside, he seems to have the strongest expertise in economic issues, things like fair return on investment, and I think that, just from what I've been able to read doing web searches on him, that something like utility surcharge would probably be one of his stronger suits. And I don't, I was kind of alarmed when I heard about consensus on the council, because I don't think there's been a lot of consensus on many issues yet, but I would say that utilities are probably a tricky area and one that he's probably better suited than a lot of other people on, even though I've never met the man, just read some of his writings.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay. The ordinance is before the council for first reading. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. The ordinance passes at first reading, and the council has requested additional information to be provided prior to second reading. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Move it.
The consent agenda has been moved. Has it been seconded?
Oh, seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let me just read what's in the consent agenda. It's not open to discussion. Appointment to the facade advisory board, appointment to the Arts and Humanities Commission, and appointment to the personnel appeals board. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda passes. The council will take a short recess, and we will be back for our work session items. And many apologies to the people who have been waiting since we're running a bit behind tonight.
And I just wanted to let the council and the audience know that Marty Itner, who was the person who alerted us to the problem of the discharge, is here. And I would like to have her make a statement and put on the record what her concerns are. We've also invited a representative from Columbia Union College to be here. I spoke to the president, Dr. Wisby, and he expressed his apologies for what happened. He is out of the country, and I understand that his assistant feels that he will be unable to be here this evening. And so there won't be anyone from CUC, but we have invited them. I just wanted to let people know that. So Marty, did you want to?
My name is Marty Itner, and I live on Flower Avenue in Tacoma Park. Tonight, we are here to discuss water quality enforcement in Tacoma Park. Granting authority to Montgomery County is long overdue and hardly a controversial topic. State enforcement can take nine months, while the county only three. It is clear that county enforcement is best for Sligo Creek. It is my wish that this work session be devoted to the larger issue of environmental stewardship, beginning in our own backyard. Recent heavy rains and the closing of Sligo Creek Parkway highlight the biggest problem we face: stormwater runoff. The creek is simply not designed to handle the massive torrents created by impervious surfaces such as parking lots and developments. This flooding scours the stream bed and damages and exposes sewer lines. As a result, we've seen these sewers break and overflow, dumping raw sewage directly into the creek, which eventually flows to the Anacostia River and Chesapeake Bay. I ask the council to consider stormwater management as top priority, and I have some suggestions. Increase the stormwater taxes Montgomery County has done to fund projects such as rain gardens and bioretention areas, like the recent project at Forest Park. There are many eroded sites in the city where rain gardens can be built but do not have the funding. Allocate more funding to the stormwater budget. Be aware of development in Silver Spring and DC that will impact the Sligo Creek watershed, and work with the county to hold developers financially accountable. Require and enforce low-impact development techniques for new construction in Tacoma Park and surrounding areas. And educate Tacoma Park citizens about stormwater runoff and require driveways and other home construction projects to be offset with a groundwater recharge project. We are also here tonight to talk about illicit discharges into the creek. On March 13th, the Maryland Department of the Environment issued a fine of $28,000 to Columbia Union College for violations dating back from 2002. The college is appealing the fine in private conversations with the state. This reveals a real problem. I ask the council, why had there been no pressure from the city to the state to take enforcement action? Why did it take more than four years of documented discharge for the state to finally take action? Are you aware of the outdated drain configuration at the college which connects their powerplant floor directly to the creek? Why did Tacoma Park think, when I phoned on January 6th of this year, that the county did have enforcement, when in fact they did not? My opinion is that the city has left Sligo Creek to others. We no longer have that luxury. I ask the city to coordinate with the county and WSSC so that every incident of discharge into the creek is documented by Tacoma Park. To follow up on violations, such as the Columbia Union College situation, and inform the public. To exert political pressure on this issue to our state and county officials. And influence and be involved to find solutions of major issues, such as the college drains and the impending Venice Hospital relocation. Sligo Creek is managed by Park and Planning, but we, Tacoma Park citizens, have an obligation to protect the creek as it runs through our city. You, as elected officials, have the power to create policies and budgets to do the same. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to put Daryl on the spot, but I don't know if anything that you wanted to say would address any of those issues. But wherever you're comfortable. I gave Marty the choice, and she chose the podium, so I'll give you the same choice.
I'll start here, and then, as the evening wears on, we may be more comfortable sitting up front. We certainly agree on a department level about the need to allocate more funding, and in fact, the council did, and you all made that decision in this year's budget, of which we very much appreciate. And I think that there'll be a lot that we need to do to educate residents as to why their stormwater tax bill—I say tax, it's a fee—is going up significantly from what it was to the new amount, which escapes me right now. $48 is what it will be. It was $26, so...
And $28.68.
$28.68. So that will be a significant increase in the amount of funds, and I think during our budget process, we illustrate to the council how we plan to spend those monies. Quite a bit of it is in capital improvement projects, but there's also a portion of it that's needed to meet our NPDES requirements, both for outflow mapping, GIS work, and then testing of outflows. So there's a lot of work ahead of us, and the city engineer has been working to develop that budget, and has got a rigorous plan of many, many projects this year, and will continue, because our system, of course, is very old, and that's the nature of the system. It has a limited lifespan, and he's been addressing both old problems as well as new problems as we go along. So we certainly agree with that. I think included in your packet is a document that I developed when this issue first was raised in front of the council most recently, about sort of the history of what the city did, what official actions the city took. And I think you have that in your document. We've been involved in this issue since 2004, albeit always in hindsight, you can say there's more we should have done, more we could have done. Over the course of that process, there were three different city engineers—not as an excuse, but that's one of those things that falls in the handoff. Though the enforcement action and the investigation action was never within the city, so the city's role was simply to notify the authorities and presumably follow up to find out what progress they were making. And I think in that document, we've laid out from Ali's history with this, the number of times he's contacted both the state and county to discuss this issue. In looking at the records on this, my own awareness of it starts at about March of 2004, when actually the city, the former Public Works Director Alfred Lott and Linda Pearlman, met with the county to discuss the issue of illicit discharge enforcement. And at that point, the purpose of that meeting was to basically say, okay, Tacoma Park, how do you want to do it? And there was a lot of discussion back and forth. At that meeting, there were also state officials, and they agreed that the state would serve as the enforcement arm for the city, and that the county discussed the possibility of being available. At first, they were talking about the city would have to pay them for the services for enforcement and investigation. In the years since then, what we've learned—and again, hindsight is 2020—but what we've learned is relying on the state does not get us the kind of program that people expect because of the lag time in terms of enforcement, because of the limited staff, and the fact that it can take nine months to a year to decide to take an enforcement action once the case has already been built. And that's what's happened with CUC. All the documentation was established, and then it was turned over to the state's Attorney's General's office, and they took that length of time to decide whether or not to proceed with an enforcement action. We understand from talking to Mio Curtis in Montgomery County that the length of time would be significantly shorter in Montgomery County. Within three months, they should be able to decide whether or not they're going to pursue enforcement action. So I think that would better serve the residents of Tacoma Park and certainly closer meet people's expectation for an enforcement action following a violation of the laws—the federal laws, the state laws, and the county laws—relative to discharge. So just speaking about the issue tonight, what you have in front of you are two things. There's a draft ordinance that the council would pass that would authorize the city manager to sign an MOU between the city and the county, transferring the enforcement authority to the county to follow up on illicit discharge reports within the city of Tacoma Park. Much of what happens on a staff level in Public Works would remain the same. We would get calls, people would be referred to the city engineer, we would do an initial investigation, then we'd pass that information on to the county. Also, another thing that took place in that meeting in 2004 was there was a specific set of steps that the city was to follow, and this was laid out by both the state and the county, and that's been followed, to my knowledge, every time we've had a report of an enforcement action. And I know Ali has been religious about that, in terms of the list of people you contact and the steps you go through once a violation or a potential violation's been identified. So that would continue to happen on the city's end. However, the enforcement action would happen solely within the county. Right now, when we notify the state, they make a decision as to whether their state enforcement folks are going to come out, or they would call the county. So oftentimes, for our issues, the county's coming out to do the investigative work anyway. So it won't be an additional new task for them. Nine times out of 10, the state calls them. I can't remember now whether they'd call them on weekends and evenings and not during the day, or something like that, but they basically end up having the county do most of the investigation work. And then they turn that information over to the state, and the state follows its process. That's the piece of it that we would streamline. We would no longer be turning information over to the state. It would stay within the county. The county's enforcement people would take it to the authority that would then decide whether or not to pursue any kind of remedy or legal action. So in front of you tonight, you have the ordinance that sets that up. You also have the draft memorandum of understanding that the city would sign. Linda Pearlman has developed this in consultation with a county attorney. So this has already been vetted and discussed from the county attorney's level. If the city were to pass the ordinance and sign off on the memorandum, this whole process would then repeat itself on the county level. The county would have to have a hearing, discuss this issue. Their staff would come and speak to it, and if it was in their agreement—which we certainly think it will be, given everything we've talked to on the staff level in the county—the county council would then give the authority to the county executive to sign off as the counterpart on this memorandum of understanding. So that's what we have in front of us this evening. That's what we're looking to do.
Can I just get clarification on one thing? It sounds from the statement that you made that we do, in fact, have in place a process for keeping a log of incidents that affect Sligo Creek. And am I correct in that, that we do, in fact, have that process?
Yeah.
And how far back does that process go?
The records that we have are specific to the staff person involved, so the current city engineer.
So maybe, what, another—a year or so?
For as long as I can hear.
Okay, all right. So that would be how far back our records go on this. But we're continuing to do this forward, and the intention is that we will document incidents in the future.
We do have to document every incident and record it with state, a day or a year, and after 20 years, allow it to go.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Can I just follow up on what Kathy was asking about? Is that—this here illicit discharge procedures?
Uh huh.
So that's what's filled out now, anytime you get a call about it?
Yeah, that's the series of calls and contacts that are made each time we have a report.
Did you have—
Why don't you all sit, like Ali and Daryl as well?
Yeah.
I just want to say that the Friends of Sligo Creek website has an area for when a citizen sees something, a discharge in the creek, and there is no protocol there to call Tacoma Park. In fact, I call the county directly because I know that that is the first—that they will respond to the call, so I do not even call Tacoma Park. And if there is a manhole cover that's overflowing, I do not call the county, because I call WSSC, because they take care of it. What I'm asking Tacoma Park to do is to take these calls that come from outside of Tacoma Park and log those in as well.
Park and log those in as well. Because it could take, because if I call Tacoma Park and then Tacoma Park called the county and then the county called the WSSC, it could be a week before the actual problem's taken care of whereby if I call WSSC directly, they come out right away and fix the problem.
But I guess I'm not understanding what your recommendation is.
My recommendation is that WSSC should have to call Tacoma, if it's within Tacoma Park, they should have to call Tacoma Park and say, hey, we fixed it. There was a problem here on X day and then it's recorded.
Okay, I understand. So that would probably have to be part of our memorandum of understanding, wouldn't it?
Well, the memorandum of understanding is simply between the city and the county. I think the other issue is.
WSSC is a whole other entity.
Yeah, I would, I mean, in an ideal world, I would like that to happen. We don't have any permit authority with WSSC. They come into our streets at this point and don't even have to tell us. We have permit authority with Washington Gas and Pepco and we can't even get them to follow through on the requirements that are stipulated.
No, but I was thinking about if it goes to the county or to Park and Planning, which is a part of the county, those we could capture through the memorandum of understanding. I understand WSSC is a whole different ballgame and we can maybe tackle that one next. But in terms of the memorandum of understanding that we have in front of us between us and the county, we could capture the calls, could we, I guess, let me phrase this as a question. Could we capture the calls that come initially into the county?
Could we, we could certainly talk to the county, tell us, yes, anytime they follow it up. And that, I think, would pretty much be standard procedure, that the county would be notifying us if we hadn't notified them that there was an issue within Tacoma Park. And that would be a standard part of the arrangement.
Okay, all right, good. And then I, you have your hand up, then Terry, and then Bruce.
Bruce and I, when we were at MML, had a conversation with a gentleman from the state that I guess oversees enforcement of water quality. And it was a pretty grim picture. They don't have any staff to speak up.
And whatever staff they don't have, it's getting worse.
And when he got finished listing everything they have to do, it's real clear the state does nothing proactive. And if they respond, they respond only to things that are crises that they think they can get to and see and have some even remote possibility of being able to collect information on. So the state's pretty paralyzed.
Yeah, I think he was not happy with the situation. I think he had six people for the entire state.
So it was pretty bad. So I'm happy to see cooperation with Montgomery County. Like what I would like though is that it shouldn't be on the citizens to follow up and be the pressure point on the county. That I think is part of the problem, is that people feel like they are the ones that are left to call the county, they're the ones that are left to bird dog the county, that we notify them, but there's no, but the follow-up basically comes from the citizens. And I think what people have asked me is for the city to act like the creek is our creek and for the city to be the entity that applies follow-up and pressure on the county and whoever else needs to be applied to, rather than relying on the citizens to do it. And I think that the city ought to be. They're certainly more likely and we've got more channels to work through if it's us applying pressure than asking the citizens to be the ones to apply pressure. So I would like that, that kind of shift in how we approach things to be accomplished. I just feel like people just shouldn't say, you shouldn't just say, I wrote a letter, we wrote a letter, we told the county about it. And then I find out that the regular citizens are spending more time following up than anybody else is spending following up. We should be doing the following up until it's resolved.
Well, ideally, I think things work best when there's sort of a tandem effort, when both the citizens and the city staff are doing the pressuring. Neither party can do it by themselves. I have one engineer, he's not going to be able to exert full-time pressure on one particular project when he's got a dozen that happen in any particular timeframe. But I agree, we need to build it into the process and it needs to be a standard part of the process. But I wouldn't at all want the citizens not to continue to do their part in pressuring whoever to follow up and take action. So I think it works best, like we've seen with utilities, it works best when it's sort of a two-front, twofold effort, both the public and the bureaucrats doing what they can to move things along.
I want discouraged citizens from staying on it, but I don't think this requires an engineer to stay on it. I think it requires somebody, you know, once we know there's a problem, that it requires, you know, the department head or somebody who's aware of what kind of the major things brewing out there to follow up and say, you know, we haven't heard back from this in two weeks. But I don't think this has to be the engineer's job. I mean, the engineer's got lots of groundwork to do and I think we should, someone within the city should be the person to continue to put pressure on them.
Can I just add to that? The city knows about both community groups, council-appointed groups, channels that, you know, bodies that are all concerned about Sligo Creek. We know Friends of Sligo Creek, we know the Committee on the Environment. Those are allies when we're having problems getting action at other levels of government. You know, the council is concerned about this. So there are a lot of ways that we can work together to get results. And it doesn't mean that our engineer is going to have the burden of getting results by himself or that the department head is going to have the burden of getting results by yourself. But having someone inside the government who is aware of those potential allies and can activate them, I think that's very useful at times like this. Yeah, and I was, it's another term.
Thank you, Mayor Porter.
I just want to make comment here because I think you're right on the track. I, during my numerous conversations with Molly here, I have always felt that that's the case. I looked up and I've maybe explicitly expressed to her that I feel like you have to work together. As you clearly mentioned, if you look at Friends of Sligo Creek as allies in this task, and I guess Daryl also touched upon the fact that you cannot do that single-handedly. When we talk about somebody in charge of illicit discharge, that is the enforcement we're talking about. We don't, we are not staffed and that was the initial reason for not having it like Gatorsburg or Rockville do in-house. The enforcement authority was not, you know. So I guess you're absolutely right. I do have personally, I made 20 phone calls during the timeframe that I talked to Molly first and before that, I made several phone calls. Some of the stuff that she was told, based on our conversation, was the stuff that I was told, which is, you know, looking at it, I understand and appreciate the level of frustration. I just don't want to, you know, give the implication that we actually sat there and applied no pressure. I don't know whether that's pressure or not, but all we could do is make a phone call, talk to Ecker, ask him to, what happened and why is states not taking action when he just described the whole process to us?
Right, and the only thing I would, the only reason I was saying that is because Mark was suggesting that it did need to be done more in-house. And I know much was done. I'm very pleased with how far we were able to get. And I think because of Marty's vigilance and Friends of Sligo Creek, you know, this and the city's work, it did kind of rise to the top. So that's progress. It should be easier in the future if we have this county agreement. And I think Daryl's point was right on. We don't want it to be done, you know, with one entity, well, things are more effective when you have the outside pressure and the inside pressure. There are different kinds of pressure and that's how things work best in public policy, I believe. So I think all of those elements are important and this MOU is making the adjustment that I think you all are coming to us to say is needed, which is moving enforcement from the state to the county. So I'm happy to support this.
Okay, Terry?
Thank you. First of all, Marty, thank you for not just bringing this to the community's attention but for your, as Councilmember Austin Lane said, tenacious work on this. You're continuing to work on it for so many, many months and years since you first noticed the problem. I appreciate the dedication that you showed by that. I also appreciate the Friends of Sligo Creek for continuing to work on this. I just find it, I guess what I would like to see is that with issues like this, and it isn't just with stormwater discharges, but it's also with streetlights, you know, I'd like to see that the city takes ownerships of the, ownership of the problems within the city so that individual residents don't have to continue to dog those issues to get them resolved. If it's something that we don't take care of ourselves, if it's something that Pepco takes care of or WSSC takes care of, that I think city staff should be tracking those things, reporting them to necessary agencies and reporting them, escalating them if they're not getting the response that's needed from the outside agency. So that if the, in this case, the state isn't being responsive, that your management knows that it's not, you're not getting the response you need or at some point, your management could decide that this council needs to help to resolve an issue. Maybe the council could help by bringing the appropriate residents together to put pressure on, or maybe it means that the council themselves need to take action, such as what you're proposing tonight. I think this is good. I mean, it sounds like it's working for a solution. It's just terribly, terribly disappointing to see that it's taken so long to get to this point. You know, we went, I read Marty's first email on this and when was that? That was years ago. And I went for a long time, I thought, you know, it's a wonderful city we live in, the problem solved, right? And then it was well over a year later that I got another notice that in fact, nothing had been accomplished yet and that the problem still existed. And that just isn't acceptable. It's, you know, we need, we need the city to take ownership of problems within our boundaries. If somebody, other jurisdiction, another organization needs to be called in to help with that, then we need, the city needs to call them and let them know, you know, Pepco, come fix your streetlight, it's out. A resident's reported that to us. And if it doesn't happen, that the city staff needs to either go back to the organization or escalate the issue so that we can try to resolve the problems. And, yeah, Marty?
My concern right now is the CUC situation where there, I call the state to find out about the hearing regarding their appeal. And basically, I'm told that this appeal is being taken care of by the two parties in a private conversation and that concerns me a great deal. They have not scheduled the hearing yet and I'm not sure if the public is going to be allowed to attend. But I'm concerned about a $28,000 fine that the college is appealing, why they won't say, and also that there is an enormous problem underground from the college power plant that goes directly to the creek. Now, as far as I can tell, they've been very good about not dumping anything in there. But the fact is that that configuration exists and they've had a very large turnover of their plant management staff there, which is part of the problem that has existed. There's been probably five or six different people there over the years. And so things fall through the cracks. And my concern is that as long as this drain configuration exists the way that it is, that some new person coming in will not have the same sensitivity to not pouring anything down that drain.
I mean, it seems the solution for the drain is either the college fixes the drain or they pour concrete down it so nobody can use it. I mean, if they're committed to not using it.
There's 14 drains. It's very, it's not just one drain, it's 14 that connect to the sewer system or the stormwater system that goes directly to the creek.
And I think according to the college, it's a $250,000 remediation. I mean, that's the kind of level of cost to correct this problem.
What fee do they pay annually?
Stormwater fee? We'd have to look into that, I don't know.
I'd be interested in finding out then.
Bruce?
Daryl, if I can go back to your earlier description of the process for getting the MOU finalized with the county. Do you have any sense of how long that's projected to take and whether there's any potential difficulties in moving that forward? The reason I ask is that my sense is it'll essentially be moving through DEP at the county. And Jim Caldwell is the director and I worked with him for three years at COG when I chaired the Environment Public Works Directors Committee. And I see him every other month at the Chesapeake Bay Policy Committee. So if there's anything that would be helpful in moving that forward expeditiously while he's still the director, let me know. Because I think we need to get that done ASAP.
Yeah, once we get the authority to sign the MOU on our end, we'll be working with the county's attorney's office who has seen and approved this document to get it scheduled on the council agenda. Everything we've heard from Montgomery County staff has been supportive, encouraging, you know, kind of almost what's taken you so long response. Again, it was a decision made in 2004 to go with the state, not the county. And as soon as I became aware of it, I talked to Linda and we started the process.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I, you know, we were sitting here talking about one thing and then Marty slammed something else down on the table. And it sounds like, you know, we can sign MOUs with everybody across the county or the state, but that isn't going to resolve the problem. And the problem is that they have an issue that's going to cost a lot of money to fix. And I would like to respectfully ask that we invite Dr. Wizby and his staff in to sit down at the council and talk about what is going to be done or what isn't going to be done so that we don't sit here saying, well, we need enforcement and we need more aggressive whatever. If it's something that they're not going to do, then it needs to be laid out on the table. They're not going to do it. I think more likely, they are sensitive to the environmental issues within the community and so we can try to come up with some kind of a plan that's agreeable to the community and to the college so that we can accomplish what needs to be done.
They were invited to join us this evening. My understanding is that they don't feel it would be appropriate for them to talk about it publicly as long as it's in sort of a quasi-enforcement mode. And they do have that right, not to say that they won't appear in front of us while they're still sort of negotiating.
Perhaps the nature of the discussion could be such that we're not going to talk about the discharge, we're going to talk about their remediation plan. What schedule is the college going to be on?
Well, my invitation to them was fairly broad, but my understanding, and it is my understanding, that they just feel that the things are related and.
They've been related for a long time.
That may be the reason. And I don't want to make it sound as if they have been uncooperative. I don't think that they're trying to be difficult in terms of the discussion. They just didn't want to participate in this particular discussion.
I know that from talking to the president of the college, that their concern is that they have money issues and that the fine is, impairs their ability to deal with the problem. But I don't understand why this is a, how you privately negotiate a way of fine. And it seems to me the city, at the very least, ought to contact the state and be a part of any negotiation and that, you know, we should make sure that our interest, which is that the problem be solved by the college in terms of the discharge, that it be solved. And if the college makes a case that, you know, paying a fine impairs their ability to solve the problem, then we need to take that into consideration because what we want is the problem solved. I mean, collecting $28,000 for no other purpose than to just collect it. If it doesn't. to just collect it, if it then makes it difficult for them to do what they need to do, is not, in my mind, the best use of their resources or our resources. $28,000 is going to go to the state, God knows what the governor will do with the money, but I can't think of anything good he'll do with it. So I'm not interested in giving him money. What I am interested is making it impossible for them to continue to have stuff going to the creek. And I think that, that the city ought to say that we need to have a place at the table, and we need to have a say in the solution, and the solution has to include a remediation so this thing cannot be repeated again. And telling people, I agree, you know, telling people not to use the drains is, is, is not going to work. And I know that the conversation I had, and the impression I was given, that was one drain. But if it's fourteen drains in that building that are a problem, that's a problem. That's a big, much bigger problem. So I guess, I think you need to move forward, contact the state right away.
We, I, I think that's something that we definitely should do is to, and it probably would involve our city attorney, one of whom is sitting over there, to sort of figure out what legal standing we've got in order to do that, and certainly to be able to, you know, create something that we can make people follow. But that might be another avenue. Anything else?
I just want to make sure that everybody wants the MOU to go forward, since it sounded like one colleague didn't care.
I, I, my, my, my sense is that there's-
No, I said that-
My sense is that there is consensus on the MOU. Okay.
But what we heard tonight is there's much more than just the MOU that needs to be done.
I just want to make sure-
And, and my, my sense is also there's, and let me just, well, maybe I should ask, is there council consensus on asking Public Works and city attorney to figure out what our legal avenues are in terms of the process going on right now?
Yeah. Okay.
I, I agree with what Mark said about the fine going to the state being meaningless, that if the $28,000 is something the city can help the college retain in order to put it into remediation of the problem, then that, that makes sense. So I'd like to see what, what legal standing we have to help do that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a continued discussion of rent stabilization. The specific topic that we wanted to focus on this evening is the ordinance that would, part of the ordinance that would specify what properties fell under rent stabilization and which ones did not. That's the focus for this evening. If we don't keep a fairly tight focus, I think we're not going to get that piece of it done.
This item was last considered by the council on June 19th. And at that point in time, there was general agreement on the members participating in the conversation on the exemption of the following properties from rent stabilization. The first, any single or any rental unit, be it a single-family home, or a townhouse, or a condominium that is owned by an individual who does not own any additional rental properties in the city of Central Park. Any accessory apartment. Any rental units located in a building receiving assistance through a governmental entity, be it the county, or the state, or the federal government. Units owned by nonprofit housing providers that are rented to low-income tenants and at rents that are established by the governmental entity financing the project. Units owned in a facility where their primary purpose is more medical, either mental health or physical health-related. And then units leased to tenants under subsidized, or rent subsidy programs, such as the Housing Choice or the Section 8 program.
And my understanding with that last one was for the, for the duration of that tenant's tenancy?
Correct. For as long as the contract is in place. We have spoken to the county to clarify their position on, on these proposed exemptions, particularly those that are tied to affordable housing properties provided to low-income individuals at a defined rental rate. And they are, the staff that we've spoken with is generally supportive of it, though they've asked that there be a blanket exception for those properties that are receiving operating support or mortgage subsidies, and those units that are, by agreement, rented to low-income individuals at a defined rental rate. Basically, what we had chatted about in the past was that it would be specific to those units that were occupied by that in, low, low-income household or low-income tenant. And for a variety of reasons, primarily the facilitation of financing for those projects that are undertaken by nonprofit housing providers, the county has asked that it be broadened and become a blanket exception so that the property of 123 Jones Street, for example, would be totally exempt from rent stabilization because it was receiving rentalists, or financial support to offset the costs, so that the units are rented to low-income individuals at an affordable rate. So basically, what you've, the agreement to date is single rental units, accessory apartments, properties receiving operating or mortgage subsidies from a governmental entity, properties owned by nonprofit housing providers which have some restrictions regarding who they can rent to and how they, how much they can charge for rent, facilities that are, whose primary purpose is to operate a treatment, recovery, therapy, sanctuary, shelter program, and Section 8 or Housing Choice voucher tenants.
Mayor Porter, I do feel, in hearing what the discussion's about, that I do have to recuse myself from the discussion.
Okay.
You just want to go watch the whole run, nerd.
I believe he's going to remain at, at the table.
Since we do have more business beyond this.
Well, and I want to make sure, since Councilmember Siemens is talking about a potential conflict of interest, I want to make sure that I'm open with people that we are renting a room in our house for the summer to a college student who's not related to my family. So I'm not going to recuse myself, but I do have that involvement in the rental world.
And, and that gets to my clarifying question here, since I guess maybe you could, in some ways, call that a group home.
No, you can't actually.
Okay, well-
If you have a single renter, it's not a group home.
Okay. But, but what I want to know is, the current ordinance exempts owner-occupied group house, and I don't see that anywhere else in the matrix, and it hasn't been mentioned. Is that still going to be outside the purview of the ordinance?
I deleted it from the matrix because it occurred to me that owner-occupied group homes are not licensed rental properties, so it doesn't apply to them regardless.
Okay, I just wanted to get that clarification.
It's included in the current ordinance, as it really shouldn't be there.
Okay. But we, it's, but it's very clear that even when there's some staff turnover over the years, that everybody in the future will know how to answer that question?
If, if they're reading their ordinance and understand the definition, yes.
Yes, let's not go through that discussion all over again. I remember the discussion about group homes. Let's not do that again.
No.
Okay. So it sounds to me like the only issue that's up in the air is the newly constructed rental housing, which is a, which was your original recommendation, and the council did not say yes to. Is, am I right about that?
There was no, there was some-
There was no consensus on that.
There was no consensus. There was discussion.
Right. And I'm, I'm happy leaving it out.
As an exemption?
Right. In other words, newly constructed rental housing would continue to be included under rent stabilization.
What?
That's not what I heard you say, Mike.
No.
I thought we, I thought we had some understanding that we were given five years to operate before we put on the rent stabilization, because you-
It wasn't the consensus.
We went, we went through the notes and listened to the conversation, and we couldn't determine whether or not you'd reached consensus on it. There, there was-
I think that's the only issue that there wasn't.
Yeah, that was part of our original recommendation.
Right.
I, I would propose a five-year exemption, because I think that-
I would propose a five-year exemption, because I think that establishing initial rents in a new building may be, well, first of all, we have no control over what the initial rent is, at all. We may be encouraging those rents to go as high as humanly possible. And owners of new buildings may not have a handle on what, well, they're certainly not going to have a handle on what the operating expenses are in a new building.
Well, I, go ahead.
So, I mean, I, I don't want to make it so that if we, I don't want to make it so that if we're trying to encourage some redevelopment along, for example, New Hampshire Avenue, and there's some opportunities for housing to be built there, that we completely create a situation where no one will be able to stick the housing. That, that would not be, in my mind, a good thing.
I agree. I, I just want to make sure, and I said this before, that we don't end up with a situation where it makes it very profitable for a property owner to tear down existing housing-
I agree.
-rebuild new housing, and charge whatever rent they want to for. And I think unless you put pretty strict controls on it, you're going to create an enormous incentive to do that.
I think what you said ought to be included in it. It can't be a tear down. It has to be a new, new construction, not a new lot.
Well, supposing that we, I mean, okay. I think when we start writing the regs, you will see what the problem with that is. It will be, it will be very difficult. As I said, I was, I was a tenant in a property that fought for, I don't know how many years, about whether it fell under rent stabilization or not. And it was, it turned out, it got down to little tiny questions of what date was the first tenant's lease, and was that, was the person actually occupying it prior to the lease, and was there, was the building habitable? And if you have, if, if the utilities in one unit weren't turned on, was it habitable or not habitable? I mean-
Kathy, we, we don't have, we don't have any new buildings here. We know nothing's been built in the multifamily world. And it seems to me that it'd be pretty clear if we get an application for, for a new building. I mean, I don't, I don't think we're in that situation. Have you, and you discussed, I thought last time, exclusions for people doing tear downs, and such as that.
We can draft some language which would address a variety of scenarios. One might be, you have an existing rental facility, they reconfigure it so it's no longer four units, it's five, to exempt that, because that's not really newly constructed housing. We can do language which addresses people that add new rooms to their rental facilities without necessarily adding any additional square footage. We can include tear downs. What, what we're envisioning is totally new-
Yeah.
-housing where there was no housing there before.
Like the Westmoreland Talleyano's-
That, that-
ICG.
Housing that, well, is, I don't believe there's any housing on their property right now. Is there-
No.
So that's new housing.
So it'd be the ICG development, say, some additional housing, as Councilmember L. Rich has talked about, occurs on New Hampshire Avenue, or you, so it's totally new construction, or you have an existing commercial building, or warehouse that's converted into rental housing, places where there was no housing before.
Okay. I, if we can manage to do that, but I think it's going to be more difficult than we think. But I don't have an objection to it in concept. What else, what other decisions do we need to make on this? Are we okay?
Are you comfortable with the council's, or the, excuse me, the county staff's recommendation regarding doing a blanket exemption for facilities as opposed to the individual units?
To explain what the, explain, I'm not sure I quite understand what they're, what they're, what they, exactly they want to change.
Right now, the way it was originally proposed was that if, for example, you had a 10-unit rental facility, and it was receiving assistance from the county to offset the operating costs, for example, and a condition of that was that 60% of the units had to be occupied by individuals who met certain income standards, that only those units where that actual low-income individual was residing would be exempt. The county has asked that the entire building be exempt to facilitate financing for that particular project. They've indicated, and our research has, has found that the number of units of a, that need to be set aside for specific income groups, be it extremely low, very low, or low income, varies depending upon the, the source of the funding. Some are as high as 90%, others are as low as 40%. So what they're looking at is just exempting the building in its entirety. Frankly, from an administrative standpoint, that would be a lot easier to administer, so we wouldn't have to modify because some units may turn over, and one year it's an individual that meets the income guidelines, the next year it's not, but the overall building still falls within the percentages set aside, or meeting the requirements of the funder.
Is there a way to ensure that a person who has a privately-owned property doesn't, say, accept funding to offset the cost of one of their units, and then exempt 20 other units from rent stabilization?
By linking it to a legally-established nonprofit housing provider, and linking it to an agreement with a governmental entity like the county, or the state of Maryland, or the federal government. You should be able to prevent those abuses. The county is unlikely to finance, the county will not finance a project where there's just one unit that is set aside for a low-income individual at an affordable rate.
Okay. Okay. Are there other questions? Terry?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Porter. First of all, since I am not a nonprofit organization-
You would not bother that.
I, I don't have to recuse myself from this discussion. I, I'm puzzled, maybe you can, can clarify this for me, but why do nonprofit organizations require this relief but for-profit organizations don't?
That is the great question. Generally, when nonpro, this is my assumption. Generally, when nonprofits acquire rental facilities, they are looking at making significant improvements in terms of the renovation of the property, which adds some additional cost to it. So, for example, there's a property over on Ethan Allen that is currently for sale for a little less than $2 million. One of the nonprofit housing providers has considered purchasing that with the, has supported the county. Preliminary renovation costs are estimated at about half a million dollars. I think it's about half a million dollars. So by the time you factor in the cost of purchasing and the cost of renovation, renovation that might otherwise not be taken, undertaken by a private landlord, because the cash flow's not there, the nonprofit is still faced with that cash flow issue. And it has a greater impact, too, because it has an impact on their ability to, to finance the project. Admittedly, for-profit property owner would face the same issues, but they don't have the same restrictions or requirements on their financing as a nonprofit such as MHP would have.
Yeah, I think that the, the answer is exactly that, that a for-profit would not be willing to give us a commitment in return for that assistance, would be, would not be willing to give us a commitment that they would maintain affordable housing for, what is it, 20 years, 30 years that they have to do?
Generally, a minimum of 20 years.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see how there, there's any way you can control a private owner from, changing from affordable to non-affordable housing. And the, the basic premise that these nonprofits are operating under is that they will continue to provide affordable housing for a long period of time. If we could, if we could figure out, I mean, on a private property, the private owner could say, yes, we intend to keep this housing affordable, but, you know, supposing it changed hands, it'd be nothing you could, you could do.
But that begets the question. For these nonprofit organizations, if you are providing this relief for, for a commitment for a certain period of time, when that period of time is over, then would the, would they come back under the rent control?
Unless the agreement was extended, or they entered into another-
But if MHP buys stuff for Victory Housing, they're not, they're not like the old investors who bought, bought the buildings and then did 20-year bonds. They're permanent. We're not dealing with the situation that we're, that everybody's facing now with the expiration of the affordable units. So this is going to be different. I don't envision MHP waiting 20 years and kicking everybody out and saying, now, now we're conduising this place.
But we don't know, we have trouble seeing a year in advance, so not knowing what's going to happen 20 years from now, we would want to retain that right.
Yeah, I agree.
Right. But, but nonprofits are constituted as entities in order to accomplish a social good. It's not like giving a for-profit entity a 20-year bond, or a 30-year bond, or whatever it is. I mean, the nonprofit, if it decided to go into the profit-making business, it would have to dissolve itself as an entity because its, its structure doesn't permit it to do that. it to do that. So, I, I mean, there, there is, you have a guarantee there with a nonprofit that you don't with a for-profit entity.
But it doesn't cost us anything to protect ourselves either.
No.
Right. No, I'm not arguing against that.
And that, that could be addressed similar to what we're proposing with the Housing Choice Section A voucher units, where the, in the event the affordability requirements are no longer in place, that the maximum rent that can be charged for that is based on a formula that was established as part of the street codification process.
I mean, one, one of the things that we've heard from the, from the for-profit property owners is they don't feel that it's possible for them to provide affordable housing and still, you know, maintain their cash flow and their ability to keep the properties. And it may be that over time, more and more of these properties come to be owned by nonprofits. That may be the way things go. But, you know, we've had some very good luck with some nonprofit entities who have rehabbed buildings and, and made them into very decent housing and maintained their affordability. So, I, I think that, at this point, our, our experience with nonprofit entities has been quite good.
I would add to that in saying, as rapidly as affordable housing is disappearing in Montgomery County, the nonprofits are the only way you're going to be able to retain stuff. Because everybody who can and will is either raising rents or converting their buildings in the county. And tenants in Silver Spring are getting, you know, 10%, 15%, 20%. Somebody I met yesterday said they had a 28% rent increase. And so, the housing is just disappearing. And if the nonprofits don't step in, and if we don't figure out how to give them the tools to step in, this is all going to be gone.
Yeah, well, I mean, most of the private property owners who've come before the council have argued for vacancy de-control, which is simply a way of taking things to market, slowly, but taking things to market. And the market around here being what it is, that would mean the disappearance of the affordable housing over time.
Very short term.
Yeah, particularly since you can't restrict people from getting rid of tenants, yeah. Okay, do we, are you all comfortable with where you are? I don't have an objection to the, to the structure that they propose, as long as they are under the restrictions of the county in terms of the requirements as to the proportion of affordable housing. And, and in many of those cases, also, my understanding is that the affordable housing is set at different levels, is that?
Correct. Depending upon the finance.
Right.
At the risk of being repetitive, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
Okay.
We're looking at single rental units owned by an individual, accessory apartments, rental facilities in their entirety, receiving operating or mortgage subsidies, rental units.
The, the operating or mortgage subsidies that have restrictions from the county.
Correct.
Okay.
Aren't we looking at everything in the staff recommendation column as a yes?
No. Well, with clarification regarding.
No, I think, I think she's trying to clarify that she's also including the first two items in the council comments.
It's the middle column. These are the council comments from the 20th. Basically, the third bullet and the fourth bullet, those are, right now, are unit-specific.
Right.
It's my understanding you support changing that to the entire facility, so it would be rental facility, and then adding to the list newly constructed rental housing for the first five years of operation, not to apply to, and then the various scenarios.
Isn't that, another way to say it is the first two bullets from the second column and all the bullets from the third column. Is that the same?
Exactly.
Is that what you're saying?
That's what I was getting at.
Uh-huh.
Basically, the same.
Is that the same then? Okay.
Very good.
I would also like to see the owner-occupied group house added to it. I feel that this list will be relied upon as a clear communication of what's exempted, and I understand that the group house doesn't fall under the rent stabilization ordinance anyway, but let's just list it here for redundancy.
Is that, I think, can we ask, can I ask Ken a question? Is, is mentioning it all going to give us a problem? The owner-occupied group house, if we say that we're going to exempt it, is that going to cause us a problem? Even though it's unnecessary?
It's not a licensed rental facility. It's not. It's only posed to licensed rental facility.
It's fine to, to mention it here tonight as something that you want to preserve when, you know, incorporating it into an ordinance of exemptions, I don't think.
Okay.
But we understand.
Well, I think what Joy's trying to avoid is this list going out again and causing people to think we're still considering things that we're not considering, which, which caused the anxiety that, that's out there about where we might be going. And I think eliminating that tonight would be a good thing.
I mean, we can, we can, if I understand correctly, we can add it to the list for discussion purposes, but in the actual.
No, we don't want to discuss it. I think a full question.
No, 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 I mean.
See, the question is, can we put, can we say that we're exempting owner-occupied group house, but it does, you also want it to be in the law, even if everybody understands that it doesn't need to be?
If it doesn't need to be, it doesn't need to be.
Well, that's what I wanted to clarify.
But that was my point earlier. I'd like to be in, like it to be in the law, if possible, so that there is no confusion X number of years from now.
And the question, the question to Ken was, does it make any difference if we put it in the law or not?
And meanwhile, all of you and all of us have been run over by a truck, and somebody wants to know where we went.
Hey, wait a minute. So, I guess the question to Ken, does it make any difference? Can we put it in the law? Will it matter?
We, we can include it in an ordinance that makes it more clear that owner-occupied.
Your job is to find language to make that happen.
Okay, all right, good. So, we can put it in there as the, in the list of exemptions, and it's quite clear, everybody looking at it, and we never hear from this issue again, right?
Right.
Okay, great. All right. Is there, is the council clear on where we are? We're talking about bullet two in the first column, one and two in the second column, and all of them in the third. Everybody's clear. Everybody's comfortable with that. Okay, I think we're set. We're set.
Progress.
The gene, smile.
Okay.
Yeah.
Poor woman. We're keeping her awake.
She looked unhappy with that.
Okay, now, the last item on the agenda is a request that we got from Joy that we look at this issue. And I don't know, I, do you want to just sort of give us what your concern is, Joy? And then I'd like to sort of say what I think the current custom is, and then we can go from there. How about that?
Sure. I'm glad this is on the agenda. We kind of talk about this or refer to it in passing periodically when council members request permission to go to events, and the, the references made to the MML convention where there's a $2,000 budgeted amount for councils to attend that conference. And so, I think it's good for us to review this. I'm not sure when the, what previous council reviewed this and set this policy, but I, I think this council can decide what the operational policy we have is, is what.
Okay. I, the, first of all, let me say, the city clerk looked, and I don't believe we have any written policy. I also consulted the previous mayor, and he didn't believe that we had any written policy either. I also talked to him about sort of what his understanding had been previous to this, and it appears that, that the custom for, going back at least through the previous mayor, and I can't speak for before that, was that the funding was specifically provided for activities related to MML and National League of Cities conferences. I think it's also been used for MML-related things. I know that I have attended the mayor's conference. The mayor's association is affiliate of MML. And I believe we've also used it for MML board events. I am on the MML board now. The, the former city clerk was also on the MML board for a while. And I don't know, I, ICLI used to, the only other thing that I can think that it's ever been used for is I, ICLI used to pay for our all expenses for somebody to attend ICLI conferences, but I understand, and Bruce, I think Bruce went to a couple, that they stopped doing that, and we may have paid for council member participation in the ICLI conference.
They have continued to pay transportation. In some cases, I think they may have paid lodging. I know it's only transportation at this point. And I know that I, there were one or two where I got per diem.
Okay.
And, and if I can also add that my recollection is that the last time this was really, kind of came up, was when my predecessor made a request for funding for something non-MML.
That must have been a long time.
Yeah.
That was about 15 years ago.
Yeah. And my understanding is that at that time, and since then, the understanding has been that this is for MML, National League of Cities, and related events. And the ICLI thing is the only exception that I know of, that was an exception. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I, I think what we've just heard about how things have been used in the past, sounds like it pretty much follows the request in that other things other than the Maryland Municipal League have been, expenses have been paid. But I think it's, it really makes sense that we formalize the process and, and budget specific amount for it so that it's not quite as, as loose as it is now, where it's, you know, seems like individual requests are put in and either approved or not approved, and this would set a policy that, that we could follow.
Right. I can just say, from my experience, last year, the city did pay for me to attend a Loroman conference that other city staff attended. But then, when I requested registration for the National League of Cities conference in the fall, that was denied, and the city manager said that it was unclear whether or not this, the, the city council approved that kind of use. So, you know, I missed that conference.
My assumption is that NLC was covered.
Yeah, but that was right.
It's unclear. And so, the city manager was simply saying, we need to have that discussion as a council, and I'm, I'm happy to do that. And I'm, I'm glad that National League of Cities is something that has been a council-approved activity. I, I'm very interested in the offerings that they have.
We, we voted.
Some years ago to join.
Oh, I'll say six or eight years ago to rejoin NLC.
No, it's.
But I seem to remember this discussion coming, I seem to remember Joy bringing this discussion to the council a while ago.
It, it sounds like the suggestion is, is what we need to do, is we, we need to establish a written policy. And if I'm, if I'm understanding where the council is going, it sounds like MML and NLC, and I assume related MML activities such as the mayor's association. The mayor's association is particularly useful, I think, because we always have the conference in Annapolis in February, in the middle of the legislative session. And it usually involves discussions with the legislative leadership, which are often very revealing.
I like the, the way that this was written, though, that, you know, it really has, that it's a fund that provides for conference attendance and council training. And then I would just think that we put a cap on the dollar amount per council member per year. And, you know, some council members may find that, that, you know, one conference is more attuned to their needs, whilst another council member may find the training is, is, is more beneficial for their ward.
Let me just, just state right up front, I probably use more money than the rest of the council, because I'm on the board of MML, and I'm also, I also am active in the mayor's association. And if you put a amount per council member, I probably won't be able to do that.
Well, actually.
If, well, but if I can suggest that, it seems like what we've got here is organizations that the council has made a decision it's in the city's best interest to be a member of. And if we're a member of, of an organization, the council should have the ability to take advantage of opportunities presented by that organization. And if those opportunities aren't worthwhile, then maybe we shouldn't be a member. So that.
I think there's.
So that for NLC, MML, I might even include ICLI, COG, those types of things, we should be able to take advantage of those opportunities and participate in those events.
Right, but what Terry was referring to was the training that might benefit one council member and not others. Like the Loroman seminar that I went to, that city staff were attending to learn about land use. That's something that, that was training that was very useful to me, because my background is in other areas. For another council member, it might be used for.
And that was some other entity entirely?
Loroman. It's a professional group that does training in the county. And so, you know, Skill Path is another one. There are professional groups that do this because they know that attorneys and public officials and city planners and people need to know, like, what's the law on land use. So, I would hate for that to be exempted.
I was trying to come up with an umbrella that would cover things, but wasn't trying to exempt things.
Right, I understand. I, I just, you know, my background is in budgeting, so, of course, in budgeting wouldn't be as useful. But for another council member, of course, in budgeting might be very useful. So, I, you know, I think sticking with an amount and giving some guidelines keeps this from being too bureaucratic, where if it's not in the list, then it doesn't get covered. And that's, that's where we were last year, when the city manager didn't feel comfortable going forward with National League of Cities.
Can I make another, another suggestion about perhaps simplifying it a bit? Maybe we can make a list of organizations, and certainly, and I would include MML, including the mayor's association, if I can include that also, and NLC.
If we don't think of it now, though, and if we can include it.
No, 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 I'm, wait a minute, I haven't finished with my suggestion. That there are certain organizations, MML, NLC, mayor's association, and ICLI, that any council member may attend events from those organizations. In addition to that, then we can have a process for specific training. Because one of the reasons that I, the mayor's association often provides very useful training. We had a thing on, what was that new budgeting thing? That new accounting thing?
Oh, Gatsby, Gatsby 34.
Right. We had, we had a Gatsby 34 seminar aimed at, you know, mayors who are not accountants but who understand city budgeting pretty well, which, which was the first time that I actually realized what this was going to do. And I remember talking to the other mayors as we walked out of the seminar, saying, oh, my gosh, you know, we did not realize how comprehensive this was, because it had always been cast before that in accountant language. And so, that was extremely useful. But a lot of the, a lot of the usefulness of the mayor's association conference is the opportunity to go to Annapolis and have small group discussions with some of the legislative leaders, and know the kinds of things that they're going to put as priorities for that legislative session. And that's very useful when we do our own legislative lobbying up in Annapolis. So, it's not, I, some of it isn't training, it's other kinds of utility. And so, if we can just lay out certain organizations that we, that we can just cover because the council as a whole thinks these are good things for us to participate in, and then put the training in addition to that, then there's these other training opportunities. I think that might simplify it. How does that sound?
Mayor Porter?
Yeah.
I, I in no way wanted to suggest that we would limit the amount of money so that you couldn't attend the mayor's conference, because I think that is important in your role as the mayor of this city. I was just suggesting that, that by having a dollar amount for each council member, that I, as a council member in Ward Four, would be able to get the training, go to the conferences, that would be a particular benefit to, to me as a, as a representative of Ward Four. And I'm, I agree with Councilmember Austin Lane that it's, it's difficult tonight to, to just identify. There are some obvious ones, like the National League of Cities, the Council of Governments, and the Maryland Municipal League, and the mayor's conference that are, that are very obvious. But there are, I know many seminars and training opportunities and other organizations that, that we receive information about, that in the past I would have attended one or two of those, except that I could only, you know, there's only so many I could attend on my own, on my own amount, my own payment. So, I would just suggest that, you know, we provide some more gross guidelines. So I would just suggest that, you know, we provide some more gross guidelines rather than specific organizations and put a cap dollar amount.
I think what the mayor just summarized made sense, and I'd be happy to draft language that we could look at.
Yeah, because I think as long as we have that core group, and then we say there are other opportunities as well.
And then, you know, we can be more specific on the other opportunities, but it doesn't, I think, make any sense for each of us to say, okay, this year I'd like to go to the MML convention, because that's a waste of energy.
Yeah.
It's a good thing for us to do.
I'd almost say it's going to be coming up with something that's as broad as possible that gives people an opportunity to take advantage of those other training opportunities. And if it means, you know, kind of making a case or having a budget per council member or whatever it is, that those opportunities be provided.
And for the... We're definitely investing in the trips to Bahamas.
And for those residents sitting at home thinking, hoping to join Mayor Williams in Washington, DC on his junkets, that's not what we're talking about.
No. I think that the farthest I've ever gone is Rocky Gap in Maryland. You know, I think we should do this, but there's an opportunity for the MML board retreat, which I'm going to be attending, would be the first thing that's coming up, and that's going to be in September, so we should try and do this sooner rather than later. And I'm assuming the MML board would be one thing...
That's covered.
Well, I'm assuming it would be, but...
Yeah, yes, it's covered. There's no question.
All right, okay, okay.
And so do we want a dollar amount in this, or should we just say that that's something that can be reviewed when council compensation is reviewed every four years?
I think we should have a dollar amount.
Sorry?
I think we should set a dollar amount of cap.
I just, I'm thinking that in this language, we want it to be easy to use through the years.
Have it in the budget. I mean, it's got to be a budget item. This year, we're going to use up the budget, well, actually, in the next year, so we may not use up the budget because of MML. So we have, but we do have a certain amount of money set aside, right?
Right, we do.
And if we go over, then we need to do, we need to make a supplemental and appropriate for it. But I mean, since we didn't anticipate a slightly broader use of it, we may spend a little bit more, or we may not.
Okay. Okay, I'll draft something and circulate it to council members for tweaking, and then we can take action soon.
Okay.
And if I can just add, I've attended a number of conferences that I felt were not things that the city should pay for, and I paid for them myself.
I know, yeah, I know you have, yep. Okay, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.